I'm gonna get our May Board of Trustees meeting started. We are live streaming over YouTube, which also means this is being recorded. We're planning to go into executive session at the end of the open session to discuss strategies regarding negotiations. With representative personnel, as doing so in open session would be detrimental to the process. We will not be reconvening after that executive session. In attendance from the Board of Trustees, we have Roger Jarrett, Bella Gorman, Darren Rose, Dwayne Stanley, Evan Zbrowski, Greg Theos, Jill Schaefer, Maura Nevin Webster, and Samini Sampa. Did you miss anybody?
No.
Alright. Just in consent agenda items, we only have the construction budget updates, but Leanna, I don't think anything was shared. Does that mean there's no surprises, nothing, nothing to share?
There were some documents that didn't make it to the board packet.
I don't think so.
Oh, okay, we'll share next time.
Okay, we'll share next time.
Well, I'm sorry, Leanna, I put up the budget and I didn't even do that one, I'm sorry.
No worries.
That's okay.
I can get that in now.
Well, it's fine unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. Are you going to do a timekeeper?
Yes, who wants to raise their hand as a timekeeper? Maybe somebody with experience timekeeping. Oh, Samini raised her hand.
Wow.
Alright, Samini's a timekeeper. I think she'd lead you to it, Roger. So we got a couple votes and one thing, we're gonna try this for the first time. And in this meeting, it's our board education, but I'm, I'm gonna kind of sandwich that in before the last vote, because the last vote is about the budget, so we're gonna leave that one for the last after the education session. But in our regular fashion, we try to get the votes out of the way first, so let's do that. First, we have approval of the minutes from our March 28 meeting, which was attached to the package. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from March 28?
Motion to approve?
Roger?
Second from Darren.
Darren?
Roger and Darren. Do we need a roll call, sir?
Uh, yes. Bella Gorman? Yes. Darren Rose?
Yes.
Dwayne Stanley?
Yes.
Dwayne?
I think he said yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Evan Zbrowski?
Yes.
Uh, Greg Theos?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer? Jill?
She's connecting.
Okay, Maura?
Yes.
Uh, Raul Porres?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Uh, Samini Sampa?
Yes.
And Jill Schaefer?
Yes. Sorry about that.
That's alright.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next, I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa to talk about the Student Opportunity Act, which also requires a vote.
Yes, okay, so let me share my screen. Wow, it would've been nice if we would've started at slide one, but... Sorry about that, folks, okay. So I just wanted to briefly explain the Student Opportunity Act and how AMSA receives funds, which is a little mystic. Um, basically, it's an act that focuses on disparities and achievement, so we're looking at our lowest achieving subgroups. And right now, this is year three of a six-year commitment that the state has made to fund this Student Opportunity Act. So AMSA doesn't receive the funds directly. Uh, Leanna, at one point in time, tried to find out what our Student Opportunity Act funds were uh, in order to kind of gauge what our investment should be in it. Uh, but it is built into the tuition number, so we're still required to create a plan to address our disparities as the state sees them. Uh, so it's a three-year plan targeting those students with the achievement gaps, and AMSA is going to focus on targeting students with disabilities and students classified as belonging to the low-income subgroup, because that is where we see our greatest gaps. So this is just some data for you all, I'm just gonna get my little face out of there. Um, and as you can see, AMSA still does significantly better than the state, which is something to be hugely proud of. But just because we're doing better, doesn't mean that we don't focus and target our interventions towards students who need it the most. So at AMSA, you can see that our general population is doing well. Um, this is the percent of students meeting and exceeding expectations, so overall, uh, in grade six, it's 43%. But when we look at the students with disabilities, only 29% are meeting and exceeding, and that's where we see the gap. So again, we do better than the state, but we can see that our gap falls with students with disabilities and our classified low-income students. Interestingly enough, when you look at grades seven, eight, and 10, there's not enough data to have them as a subgroup, which means, again, that AMSA's doing a really great job getting kids up to par and closing that gap. In fact, they may no longer need their individual education plans, thereby lowering the IEP numbers and not having enough data to report. Uh, we can still see a gap between our low-income students and students not classified as low-income. It gets much closer in grade 10, but we're still a little bit behind. Oops. This is English now? Again, our scores are well above the state level for meeting and exceeding. And here we are, looking at students with disabilities and students classified as low-income, and we see our gap that we have to address. So, how are we going to do it? Um, we're going to work with three research-based practices. One is comprehensive tiered support systems. And we've been working on that this year. Our department, our academic department chairs have been really working hard with their departments to identify supports that we will, you know, we've been giving and we will give um, in the classroom and wrapping that all up into a district curriculum accommodation plan, so that everyone, our families, all of our stakeholders, understand what support we provide in our classroom. We're gonna continue that by creating an outline of everything AMSA does, so that when others come in and they take a look at AMSA, we're all speaking the same language, and when someone asks about like MTS or DCAP or all these acronyms, everyone on staff knows what they mean and they can explain it. Uh, because I think that we do more, but we don't always communicate what we're doing. Uh, the second thing is we're going to do some targeted support um, by developing an intervention program that targets the lowest-performing groups and provides direct math, science, and English intervention, combined with social-emotional learning supports. And you'll see that through our math intervention program and with our peer coaching. Also, high-leverage practices for students with disabilities. We're going to be looking at training staff in high-level leverage instructional practices designed for students with disabilities through our PLCs next year as an offering in our PLCs. So what, uh, how do, how do we carry out this plan? Well, we're offering all incoming sixth graders access to our Summer Acceleration Academy. We've just opened that up to our rising seventh graders, so the current sixth graders. A couple of questions that our community keeps asking about the Summer Academy is, can I come for a week? Can I come for two weeks instead of the four-week program? Since this is grant-funded and it is funded by the Department of Education, they expect students to be there every day. If we have low enrollment, we may try to branch off some separate weeks, but as of right now, the answer is you do need to attend all four weeks. We will be continuing with our math intervention program, it's very successful. Our teachers work small group, one-on-one with kids that are struggling, and these kids are identified throughout the year. They kind of go in the program and come out of the program based on their needs. We're gonna continue our peer academic coaching and our MCAS prep. And with these targeted supports, we feel that that gap will close for us, or continue to close. Engagement, we need to also, um, have a list of engagement strategies in order to fulfill the plan, the SOA plan. Uh, family engagement opportunities. We're going to really focus on celebrating diversity, celebrating our academic excellence. I don't think we do that enough, I don't think we tell our story enough. Um, we're gonna look to provide formal and informal opportunities for this kind of engagement with our families. Community mapping, counseling staff partnered, uh, is gonna partner with outreach to create a kind of a community map to identify community resources available to our families and share that with our families. We'll be continuing our community advocacy program, partnering with the Charter Association uh, to implement all sorts of advocacy activities right now. Uh, we are asking our students and our families to kind of fill out a little why AMSA is important to them and why they've been successful at AMSA, so we're gonna continue all those activities with the Charter Association. And we're gonna look to, you know, partner with the PTO to really expand that to be more of a parent network program, so network of parents who can act as liaisons for other parents, sharing information, and encouraging engagement. And we will measure this by the annual family engagement survey that I believe just went out from the Education Committee. Uh, next steps, we need the board to vote to approve this plan. Um, and then it's my job and Mr. Noraki's job and Ms. Sensi's job to work with the staff to carry out the plan. And then we monitor and, um, we, uh, we monitor and we see how close we get to the targets, and we have to report out on it annually. I'm gonna stop the share to take questions on that before you decide whether or not it's a strong plan for us.
I have a, I have a question. Are there additional costs, like, involved with this plan? You mentioned that we received a grant. Are there any additional costs that would impact the AMSA budget?
No, and, and we designed it that way, because as I said, the funding is a little hidden. So, um, we, we are able to do this with what we have. Okay.
Just, um, maybe for my own clarification, when the numbers that you showed about meeting expectations and whatnot, is that related to standardized testing or our own expectations, so it's like MCAS?
Yes, exactly, so basically, those are our MCAS scores. Those were the percentage of students that are meeting or exceeding expectations on MCAS.
And those numbers were from last year?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess on the detail of that one, what the plan provides, you know, I'm good with what you shared, but is that, was there something discussed in Ed Committee beyond that, or was that the next step after we approved this?
No, this, this wasn't in Ed Committee, this was something that, um, I worked on. I had a conversation with Luva regarding the math intervention program and Marty Richardson with regards to the peer coaching, because that's how they attacked the English. So, that's how we developed the three things, the targeted intervention, the community engagement, and, um, oh, the third one, hold on. I got my notes here, because when it's not up on the screen. And that is the, the basis of the plan. It will say that we are going to carry out those things that I reviewed with you. Oh, comprehensive tiered support system, targeted support, and then the high-leverage practices for students with disabilities.
And then last question from me, you mentioned the Summer Acceleration Academy was for rising seventh graders. Is that different than, because I know there's a Summer Academy for the incoming sixth graders.
So we, we, we're monitoring our numbers, and based on numbers, we just recently opened that up to the rising seventh graders as well. Um, we have the capacity to work with approximately, well, over 100 students. So, and right now, we're right at about 30 students that have committed to the program, so we will expand the grades, you know, based on our ability to, to do so. We wanna, we wanna fill the Summer Academy, we think it's a great opportunity for kids that need to close that gap, but also for kids that wanna just accelerate, because we'll be doing both.
I guess I have another follow-up to that.
Absolutely.
The slides you showed, I mean, the gap is more so on the sixth grade, because they're incoming, right? And they haven't yet been at AMSA, so it does seem like this would benefit the sixth grader, incoming sixth graders the most.
Correct.
Is there some thought about doing another communication or outreach to the sixth grade families? And maybe even showing some of these results to them?
Absolutely, and in fact, I spoke with Mr. Noraki and Ms. Sensi today, not only, and, and Mr. Finkel, so I've asked Mr. Finkel to blast it out as often as he can, but what we're waiting for, the placement test scores. And as soon as we get those, we are gonna do targeted phone calls, inviting people by phone to join the Summer Academy, um, because it's important. Great questions, though, thank you.
Um, one more, sort of a reporting question, so we're gonna put this program in place, and what time would we, the board, receive a report on the results of the first year of the campaign? When should we schedule it?
I would, I would anticipate a couple of things, so we really won't see results for two years when it comes to standardized testing, right? Because they'll be coming into sixth grade next year, they'll take their standardized test, we will get it in the fall of 2025. So that'll be the first time that the board sees scores, um, from this group. Now, you know, it's, it's a little apples and oranges, right? Because they're different students, so when you're looking at your test scores, these would be from, uh, 2023, and we're gonna look at test scores from 2020 five for the sixth graders. You know, you're talking, uh, it could be a very, very different group, right? So yet...
We're not tracking, we're not tracking by students, but we, we'll have a, a different, a different class.
Right, but I think that we can provide the board with some more, a little bit more anecdotal data from our staff that are teaching the kids, because so based on their math placement test, they'll be grouped, and those that attend the Acceleration Academy, it'll be really interesting to see if, when they start with us in September, their teacher says, oh, no, no, wrong place, let's move them in a different level, right? So I'm gonna be looking for that type of data to really understand how these kids did versus, you know, looking at their sixth-grade MCAS scores. I'm, I'm not sure that that's the, that is the value as much as seeing if they jump levels or, you know, their, their grade average is better. Teacher feedback telling us that, yes, the kids that went to the academy were more prepared, you know, they understood the concepts, and they didn't have to circle back. Because of the gap in reporting with MCAS, like you take it and then you wait till the fall to get it, it's not the best metric.
No, it's not, not one that you can react to, but I think, maybe an open, open question, maybe, or something that we talk about in education is, how, what, what are the tactics for reporting out on this, uh, plan?
Mm-hmm.
Not, not, not an answer, I'm expecting to get, you know, it's something to think about.
Right.
Thank you.
The state expects the MCAS scores to jump, that's what they expect. And they actually have, and I don't know what the num, the number is, they actually have like an expectation of a percent, I'd have to go back into the state data and look at that. They'll tell us that we need to push so many points, get so many more points to like push kids from not meeting to meeting and exceeding. Um, but there's, there's a number that they want us to meet.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Lisa about the Student Opportunity Act? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the plan as presented.
Motion to approve the plan?
That's Bella.
I'll second that, Evan.
Evan seconds. I'm gonna call the roll, sir.
Yeah. Getting here, alright. Uh, Bella, yes. Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Samini?
Yes.
That's everyone.
The motion passes, so thank you, everybody. Anything that we can do to improve our excellence and to close the gaps is definitely a good thing for us.
Our staff does an amazing job doing that, so I'm confident that they'll continue.
Absolutely. Alright, the next thing, I think we talked about it at the last board meeting, but this is the actual vote to move forward with the roof repair that is much needed, and that we're happy to say we, we have the the availability of the funds to do it from, from the loan, so, um, I'll let Leanna explain the vote, or, you know, what, what we're bringing forward for approval. But I think we have talked about this in the past, Leanna?
Yes, so, um, 199 Forest Street, which is fondly known as the upper school, is in drastic need of a new roof. And we had added this to our capital plan with just a rough estimate, um, thinking it was, it was gonna cost about $400,000. Um, Eric's done some amazing work getting quotes from three different contractors, and we got a quote for $130,000 to, um, replace this roof. And it actually is the same company that replaced, um, the white building roof a few years ago, and they did a phenomenal job, no issues, no problems, comes with a 20-year warranty. Um, ran the numbers, we definitely can do it this year. It's a little trickier next year due to our loan covenants. So, um, Lisa and I are recommending, along with Finance Committee, um, that we go ahead and do this work this year, if at all possible.
Sounds like a good deal when you put it like that. And this was discussed in detail at Finance and the Finance Committee unanimously recommended to go forward with this.
And Leanna, you had mentioned the work would probably be done after, like, mid-June.
It's gonna be start the week after, um, school lets out, so there will be no noise for our students. It'll be a, a clean job, they, they go in, they take about three to five days, and it's done. So Eric's already working on the schedule.
Excellent. Any questions or any further comments from Finance? I guess we're ready for a vote then. So I'll take a motion to approve moving forward with the roof proposal that's attached, as presented by Leanna.
Motion to approve as described, Roger?
I'll second it for a little seconds. I'm already off mute. I think Jill was ready to second, but, or was, or was that a question, Jill? Alright, sorry, I got the second, sorry, go ahead, sir.
Yes, Bella, yes. Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
We have, um, Maura?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Samini?
Yes.
That's everyone.
And the motion passes, thank you, everybody, we're on our path to continue to improve our, our campus. It's very exciting to keep doing that. Even more exciting is the next couple of votes, so, um, like I mentioned, we'll leave the, the budget approval until after the, the education session, but the next two votes is, are about, um, new trustees. So we have, um, two guests for now, and, you know, hopefully no longer guests after this, and um, with Christine Trident and Jim Carter here on the call. Uh, as you, we may have been discussing this in the past, but just so everybody knows the process, once, we, actually, both of them have been participating in committees, and Christine's a member of the Ed Education Committee, and Jim has been participating for a while in finance. And so they're known to the Board of Trustees. They have met with some of you outside of those committee, uh, meetings as well, and then they met with Lisa. Uh, their candidacy was brought forward in governance, where we discussed their, their candidacy and and consider their, their participation in the Board of Trustees. Uh, Governance recommends approval of both of them as, as trustees and need to be voted in today. But, uh, before we actually take the votes, I guess I'll, I'll start with Christine, ladies first. Uh, Christine is the CEO of a publishing company, so she's no stranger to the educational world, and she's a, I'm gonna call her a librarian at heart, if not an, an actual librarian, because I think you have...
Not quite there yet, but...
A small library, at least you have your tiny, uh, library.
Me too. I have that old free library on the sidewalk, yeah.
But maybe I'll turn it over to you, Christine, anything you wanna say to introduce yourself for those that haven't met you yet, or any comments about why you wanna join the board?
Sure, sure, thank you, yes, so I am, um, CEO and owner of, actually, a small but mighty ed tech company. Um, we're, company is 22 years old, I'm Vice Chair of the Board of the Massachusetts Center for the Book. So there is definitely a, um, a pattern to my, my interests, my experience, which is exactly, so there are sort of two reasons why I'm interested in pursuing this board, which is, you know, I do think my skills and experience lend themselves to being of use to a place that has brought my daughter a lot of joy, you know, AMSA, that has been, been wonderful for our family. And sort of, on the other side, I am always thinking about professional development for myself, right? And I, I like to do new things and meet new people, and so it's sort of one of the most mutually beneficial situations I can imagine, just sort of being involved in this process at a place that is near and dear to our hearts.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion, any comments for, from anybody, or questions for Christine, or anybody from Governance that wants to add anything?
Well, I mean, the vote was unanimous, and we really appreciate Christine being here and available, and, uh, definitely value the contributions that she's already brought and will be bringing to the board, so thank you, Kristi.
Thank you.
Alright. If there are no other comments, um, I will entertain a motion to approve, um, the election of Christine Trident as a trustee.
So moved, Maura. So moved. Maura?
Second.
Second by so many.
Mimi? Okay.
And roll the call. From the roll.
Bella? Yes. Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Rahul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And so, Mimi?
Yes.
Excellent. Motion passes. Congratulations, Christine. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we're glad to have a new member. Uh, and the next one, just as exciting. Uh, Jim Carter is no stranger to the board. Like I mentioned, he's been participating in, in finance. Uh, he, he is retired, which he, he reminded us that, that means that he's looking forward to giving back to AMSA as, you know, has, has supported his family as well. And, you know, he has a background in, in actuarial, on the actuarial field, so I think that, that, uh, finance expertise is something that we, we already enjoyed the benefit of, of him sharing that with us. So, uh, I don't know, Jim, anything you wanna add to introducing yourself for those that haven't met you yet? I know you're not, no stranger to this board, but and I'll-
Uh, well, certainly, I'm, um, enjoyed my time working on the Finance Committee and as you have mentioned, I share with Christine, uh, 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 passion for AMSA. My daughters are two recent graduates and we appreciate, our family appreciates the support that they both received, um, throughout their years and, um, continue, I continue to marvel at the successes of the current students athletically, academically, and I just got a chance to see the, um, musical last weekend and was really impressed by the musical talent, uh, and the participation levels in the, uh, in that program. Uh, just about my career, I served in a variety of actuarial roles over the years. I moved to Marlboro when I joined Tufts Health Plan in twen- uh, two thousand and six, uh, when my kids were both under two. And, um, I, well, I've done a variety of actuarial roles over my career. My, the second half of my career was largely centered on valuation rules, which is estimating, mathematically estimating, uh, future claim costs, uh, current liabilities, things like that. And in that role, I worked very, very closely with, my team worked very closely with the accounting team in terms, because the, these accrued liabilities were a big part of the, uh, expenses. And so, we had to, my team had to work very closely with accounting and preparation of financial statements and, um, and assorted other uh, responsibilities.
So, um, there's more than one reason to be excited about Jim joining the board. Um, I would say not that this is the most important one, but we are losing a, a couple more members of the terms are expiring and having somebody with financial expertise is always something good uh, to have. So, definitely welcome, um, having that be something that, that would be taken care of if, uh, Jim shares that talent with us.
And again, if I may say, vote was unanimous, uh, it was really nice to have the conversations that we had. Um, already, I mean, I can see the value add, as I've said about Christine as well, but one of the things I would say is, uh, just the thoughtful deliberation that I'm hearing, uh, in Jim and how, you know, uh, he thinks through problems and that, that really is something that, uh, the board values a lot and really appreciate, um, that sort of discussion that we have. So, uh, again, excited to have, uh, both of them on board after we take the vote.
I'd also like to, uh, thank Jim for all of his service already in finance. He's been a finance member for at least two years now, roughly. And thank you for, uh, volunteering to step forward to be a trustee. Look forward to your future contributions to AMSA. Any other questions or comments for Jim? Hearing Nono entertain a motion to approve the election of Jim Carter as a trustee.
So moved. Bella?
Bella.
Sarah will second it.
Who was that?
Several of us said it, but I think I'll, I'll hand it to Greg. Go ahead.
I'll second it, Greg.
Greg seconds.
Okay. I'll call.
Just please.
Bella?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Rahul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And so, Mimi?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Congratulations, Jim. Welcome to the Board of Trustees and welcome Christine as well again. We have two new trustees, which I'm excited to say gives us a, a strong foundation to, for the sustainability of going forward. This, you know, board recruitment is something that we should always keep in mind and we should always be working towards. So, I'm excited every time we welcome, you know, more trustees to the board to, to ensure that continuity. So, looking forward to working with you for, for the next, uh, you know, few weeks and, and then also for you guys to continue to participate, uh, for the next couple of years. Now, um, just to be clear, kind of process wise, now that the board has approved your, both your candidacies, um, Sarah takes care of the submission to the Department of Education and they have their steps that they, they take before they formally, um, I don't know what the right word is, accept or validate your, your participation. So, technically, you will be voting members once that happens. Um, but up till now, you know, of course, you're welcome to participate, um, just the same way you've been participating so far. So, you'll be voting members as soon as we hear back from, from these. Um, and term one, Sarah, is that, so it's a two-year term? Does that start when?
July one.
July one, okay. So, that, uh, goes all the way to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, correct?
Right.
It's a, it's a three-year term.
Sorry, three-year term, so twenty twenty-seven.
Yes, twenty twenty-seven. Thank you, Roger.
Yes, thank you. It's an important clarification. So, again, thank you both, uh, and, and welcome. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Um, I think, and actually, since, since we're talking about the board, I'll take this opportunity to say that I, I believe we, we build a, a very good team here where there's, uh, good camaraderie and, you know, we're, I, I think, at least I've gotten used to working with, you know, this great group of people. So, I hope that continues with, you know, with you guys joining and with, with anything that comes with the future of the board. So, you know, hopefully it'll continue that culture that we have here and, and I, I have no reason to think that's not gonna be the case for the next, the many years. All right, with that, right, we do have one more vote, but I'm gonna actually leave that vote until after we try our, you know, if you remember, we've been talking for a while about this idea of having education topics as part of our board meetings. And the first one that came to mind and the first one that we actually had, you know, at, at least Bella was very excited to be part of this and say, hey, you know, how about we have a finance one-on-one? There's a lot of things that we talk about finance that I think every trustee should be familiar with and not everybody has the background or the experience of the education to understand what goes into creating a budget or, you know, all the, all the financial reports that we look at. But we still have to make big decisions that are dependent on those things. So, this is the first one of those topics and so we have it on the agenda for today. And it's very timely because we're also approving the budget today. So, we actually, um, Bella was saying, how about we do the education first before we approve the budget, because I think that would be, that'll be helpful for the vote. So, with that, um, and I think we're doing well on time, right? Um, so I'll, I'll turn it over to Bella for that finance one-on-one education.
Okay, uh, can everyone see? I guess I should do side slideshow.
Yes, let's see your screen.
Okay, can everyone see that? Yes. Okay. Um, so I'm not claiming that I'm a finance expert like Jim. I, I'm an actuary. I'm a health actuary, so I'm, I'm not an accountant. Uh, but my background is financial modeling. Um, and so, um, this is really meant to not only, I guess, share what I've learned with all of you, but maybe be part one of a series of things that we bring back to the board. Um, I really feel that our board should have some onboarding material, which we really don't, on our finances and perhaps, you know, this could be like the first chapter of our onboarding material for new board members. Um, and since we have, um, some new board members, um, it seems really timely that, that we start doing this. So, the information I'm gonna show you today is really, some of it might be information that a lot of you already know. Um, but we thought we would just start with the basics and then the next time we meet, uh, we can, you know, we thought about talking about another, another subject. And feel free to stop me and interrupt me if you have any questions. So, um, the first thing I wanted to just talk about is our income, like where does our money come from? How much do we get in one year? Um, all of our annual reports are actually on our website and if you don't know, it's, you could, it's under, it's actually under the board. And then I think it's under board documents and, um, the our annual state or annual reports, which have our, um, annual statements. Um, they're posted for ever since, you know, from now and, and, and like, I think it's the past eight years. So, what I'm showing you right now are two pie charts. The one on the left is, uh, for the time period July twenty twenty-two through June twenty twenty-three. And so, that was last year and, um, you know, our total income was seventeen point nine million dollars. So, that's how much money, um, AMSA, uh, brought in to, for the, uh, for that, for the school, you know, that time period. Um, of that seventeen point nine million, fifteen point eight, or that dark blue part of the pie, comes from the state. Um, it's, so eighty-eight percent of our income, uh, it comes from the state. And so, we're pretty much, um, rely on the state for our, for our income. There's a magenta pie, that one point one million dollars. That's really money that we collect that actually goes back out the door. It's for like student transportation, athletic programs, um, student program, um, program, other student programs. And then I think there's like a nutrition, um, program. Um, so that's really money we can't count on because it's money we collect that actually gets spent in expenses. Um, for comparison purposes, I showed eight years ago how much we collected or got for income and it was, you know, almost fourteen million, thirteen point nine. And ninety-one percent of the pie back then was from the state. Uh, one of the things that, um, is new is that we, we have rental income. And that's in, that's the blue pie, blue piece on the left-hand side at two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And, um, you know, so that's new income since twenty seventeen, uh, twenty eighteen because we purchased the white building and we rent out, we rent out that space and on the first floor. Um, and then I guess the other thing I wanna mention is this past year, we had five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in grants and donations. And so, that number is actually higher than most years and it's because of the ESAR grant, which is, which is go, you know, is going away. So, that number's gonna get smaller. Um, I guess another point I wanted to, um, state is that if you compare that fifteen point eight million that we got last year compared to the twelve point six million we got from July twenty fourteen through June twenty fifteen, that works out to about a two point eight percent increase annually. So, basically every year, the state gives us two point eight percent more than, than the prior year. And I have another slide that will show that, um, more clearly. Any questions or thoughts? Okay, so I'm gonna go to the next slide. So, this, um, slide actually shows what's really great about the DEES website is they have so much data and lots of data and lots of spreadsheets, which I really enjoy like looking at and manipulating. And you can actually see what all the charter schools get in, in terms of tuition per student. Um, this is, this chart shows what AMSA has received, uh, and it's AMSA tuition per student. Um, and like I said, it, on the previous slide, almost ninety percent of our revenue comes from the state. And you can see the volatility. So, in fiscal year twenty fourteen, we got twelve thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars per student. Um, and then in fifteen, it went up three percent. But then you can see like in fiscal year seventeen, it went up seven point two. And then in fiscal year eighteen, it was negative. So, there is fluctuations because, because these amounts are tied to our state budget. And so, it's, it is hard to predict like year to year. But what you can consistently see is that if you look, if you look at the average over the past ten years, it's, it's a three point one percent increase. Over the past five years, it's three point three. And over the past three years, it's two point seven. So, you know, you can kind of say reasonably, a, a three percent, you know, we'll, we'll probably most likely get a three percent increase in revenue uh, from the prior year. Um, any questions? Okay. So, now I'm just gonna hop over to AMSA operating expenses. Um, so, the bar chart on the left just again compares the two time periods, uh, July twenty twenty-two through June twenty twenty-three. Our operating expenses was sixteen million, seventy-seven thousand. Um, and in June twenty fourteen through June twenty fifteen, it was twelve point nine. So, in other words, the, our operating expenses increased about two point eight percent a year for the, over the past eight years. The pie chart on the right, um, just focuses on last year from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three and how much of our operating expenses goes, um, towards each of these buckets. So, forty-five percent of our operating expenses is for teacher salaries. Um, seventeen percent is for administration salaries. Twelve percent is for payroll taxes and fringe benefits like health insurance. Um, and then there's an other bucket of other operating expenses for twenty-six, at twenty-six percent. Um, you know, we just had a call with our auditors on Tuesday and we, we were able to ask them a bunch of questions. Um, and, you know, they suggest a rule of thumb is to set aside three months of operating expenses as, you know, your rainy day fund, uh, like for unforeseen risks. So, if we take that sixteen million, seventy-seven thousand and divide that by twelve, that's about, you know, that's, you know, about one point three million dollars and you multiply that by three, um, that's four point one million. So, you know, their suggestion is, you know, keep that aside, uh, for any unforeseen risk. And it, it's kind of the rule of thumb that they, they have suggested. Any questions? All right. So, this last slide just kind of shows, um, the first table shows as of March thirty-first, you know, how much did we have in our checking flats slash savings account? Well, you know, we had nineteen million dollars. Um, ten point eight million dollars of that nineteen is the bank loan for the building project. So, um, that mon- money is earmarked for the building project and it's from, from the loan. Um, and if we set aside that four point one million dollars, because that's the rule of thumb, what we have left is, um, four million, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And that money is really for capital investments such as the roof, HVAC, teacher laptops, et cetera. And I think what we would like to do is come back and talk about capital investments at the next, at our next board meeting. Um, and just as for comparison, I was just looking at, you know, as of June thirtieth, twenty fifteen, so eight years ago, uh, you know, how much we had in checking and savings, setting aside three months of operating expense during that time period and what was in the cash, and what was in the reserves. And, and it was three point seven. So, that's it. That's all I have. Um, thought we'd just, you know, do a quick spiel and we'll come back next time and, and talk about, um, capital investments.
Yeah, and Bella, thank you. You know, that, that was helpful and I, I think, um, sometimes when we review financial statements, it's hard to think, okay, what should we focus on? What are we looking for? What's important, what's not important? What you described was basically a combination. You know, the first couple of things were, you know, revenue expenses and- What you described was basically a combination, you know, the first couple of things were, you know, revenue expenses and then cash position. If you translate that to the financial statements, things happen to the revenue and expenses, you know, profit and losses. That's what in the corporate world, we call that an income statement. Uh, maybe here we go, you know, a little bit differently, but it, but it is basically a movie of what happened throughout a period of time, typically the year, you know, the whole fiscal year for the school. And the balance sheet is what answers the other question about what do we have in the bank? What do we owe the banks? You know, what, what's, uh, assets that we have? And that is like a picture, right? It's, it's a point in time. It's not a period of time, it's a point in time, right? Right now we have this much cash. And it may be misleading to look at one without the other. So for example, when you look at the income statement, you'll see in the budget today, we're, we're gonna have a very low, um, net income. Number one, it's not a big deal because we're a nonprofit. We don't have shareholders. We, we're not trying to make money. We're trying to accomplish our mission. So the, the net income is really, um, has a lot of components to it besides the things that allows us to continue to operate, which is the operating, uh, component of it. Uh, but part of that is because we have now from starting, you know, since now we own the building, we have depreciation expense, which is a non-cash expense that reduces the net income, but it doesn't reduce the amount of cash that we have and doesn't reduce our ability to cover our operating expenses. So that's one of the things to keep in mind. When you look only at the income statement, you see, oh, we have a lower net income now. But that's really not that bad because we have the cash to cover our expenses.
Yeah, I think you have to look at both in context with each other, with each other.
Yeah. Um, and then the other comment related to that, and you mentioned, you know, we have, you see some, a certain amount of cash for all three serving those three months of, of, uh, expenses. But there's also some cash that we may not be able to use for certain purposes. So a good example is the decision we just took to, um, to, to change the roof. We were able to use part of the loan that we got for the building, and that's one of the, I know we discussed this in the past, but it's worth repeating since the topic is, is timely. That, that was a loan that is not like a typical mortgage. When you buy your house, you put it down payment and you pay mortgage to own your house that's already built. It was basically a project loan, which means that bank gave us a certain amount of money that we used to buy the buildings and then build a new building and then do other things that are related to capital expenditures, um, facilities. We cannot use those funds for other things. We can't use those funds for, you know, paying for a new program or things like that, because that loan was given to us for a specific purpose. And we have to repay based on, you know, the asset that is the buildings and, and the campus. And so that's also something important to understand when you see a certain amount of cash sitting somewhere. And by the way, it's not just sitting atly, that you shows a, a, a portion of, uh, investment income that we're getting. And I'm sure we're gonna see that in the budget too. Um, that is, that, that is another source of, of cash that we can only use for certain purposes. So I think those little things are important because they're gonna be recurring themes. When we talk about budget, you're gonna, we're gonna talk about, uh, profit and loss. We're gonna talk about a cash position. Uh, when the auditors present the results at the end of the year, they present our income statement or our cash balance, you know, a balance sheet. So it, it's good to have a, a, at least a high level understanding of what those things mean. Any questions from anybody else? Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you for sharing that, Bella. And, and again, I'm gonna reiterate what I've said in the previous board meeting. Uh, we wanna have as many education topics like this as, as it makes sense. So if anybody thinks like, hey, I'm, I'm not sure how to make a decision because I don't understand, you know, anything within the school. Uh, please, you know, let me know and then we'll, we'll definitely make it part of the plan. No. And Sarah, you're up for next month for the, uh, we, we're getting ready for a charter renewal. So I know you're the expert on that. So we'll be looking forward to that in June. All right, um, so now we can go back to the budget. So it's our last vote of the, of the day. Uh, Leanna, please, I'm gonna turn it over to you unless you wanna share that presentation.
Yep, I can share. Lisa, did you have your hand up before I start?
No, that was a clap for Bella, because that was well done.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Bella. That was a great segue into the budget. Um, I'm gonna
I always try to be good like Dwayne.
Okay. Okay, so, um, we met on Tuesday to review the, um, twenty twenty-five operating budget. And the finance committee, um, uh, uh, voted to recommend it to, um, the board of trustees. So I'm just gonna go through a few highlights, um, with the budget. Oh, now I can't click. Oh, there it goes. It's just a little slow. Okay, so, um, I'll start by going over the projected profit and loss for next year. Um, we started with, um, a tuition number of sixteen million six twenty-two. Um, that is basically two point eight five percent, um, increase over the prior year's, um, tuition. Um, and then we have some student programs, grants, rental and other. Um, for our total revenue of eighteen million four ninety-three versus, um, some, the four, what we're forecasting for the rest of this school year, twenty twenty-four, eighteen million three hundred and fifty, uh, for a variance of a hundred and forty-three, um, thousand. And then for expenses, our big expense line item is salaries and benefits, so twelve million six ten versus what we're forecasting this year, twelve million two forty-eight. And then, um, other expenses to men, to mention are facilities, um, student programs and, um, supplies and then other operating for total, um, budgeted expense of eighteen million three ninety-six versus plan for this year of seventeen million four ninety, uh, leaving us with a surplus of ninety-seven thousand of what we're budgeting for next year. I'm going to click it. All right, seems to be working now. Um, just some more details of the revenue, some highlights. Again, tuition, we're projecting at a two point eight, um, percent increase over last year's tuition. Um, we have a substantial other, um, income, as Bella mentioned. Um, the majority of this is investment income. Um, when the bank, so we had a two-year interest-free loan. And we have recently started, uh, in October, um, paying mortgage principal and interest. Um, our bank was kind enough to, when they put the loan proceeds into our cash account, give us almost the same percentage, um, of interest as we are paying out to that loan. So we're seeing some substantial investment income, um, which will continue, um, pretty much half of next year. Um, grants, um, you'll see the delta here, it's gone way down, as Bella mentioned. Our Esra funding is gonna be spent through the end of this, um, fiscal year, twenty twenty-four. Um, and we've got some student programs, rental, uh, student transportation, athletics and food services. Um, so that's just a little bit more of a breakdown of our revenue. And I'll go to expenses, same with expense, a little bit more detail. Again, salaries and benefits is our top, um, expense. And then facilities and other operating is also, uh, one of the larger expense groupings. Um, student programs and supplies, athletics, student transportation, food services and professional development for a total expense of eighteen million three ninety-six. Um, just some assumptions that we use. Um, the salary and benefits are based on the current counter offer that Amza made to the teachers' union. And, uh, facilities and other, um, is increased because, um, we estimated some cost due to the new building. Um, our utilities are gonna increase, insurance is gonna increase, so on and so forth. And that also includes the depreciation on the new building. And then, uh, last but not least, um, here's a schedule of what we plan on doing for capital assets um, next year. It's, it's a pretty slimmed down report, um, versus what you're gonna see next month, um, which is our wish list for improvement. Um, right now we have, um, the HVAC rooftops that you guys have already, um, approved. But we anticipate the expense coming in next year due to, um, the lead time on getting the equipment. And then this is just all of, of the IT stuff that we, um, purchased on an annual basis for a total of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Any questions? I think that's it.
I know this was thoroughly reviewed and finance committee. Any questions from anybody?
Can I ask for the, the Chromebook cards and white glove services, um, item? I'm just not familiar what like, what white glove services are we talking about, if you know?
Um, that is actually an Erica question, but that's how we typically buy our Chromebooks. Um, they do some things to the Chromebooks before we get them.
So, so that money is, sorry, keep going.
It also includes a warranty for, um, the amount of estimated time that we're gonna use the Chromebooks. Usually, I think a three-year warranty. It could be five, I'm not sure.
Gotcha. So, so all of that is Chromebook related. It's not there. I was just wondering if there was anything lumped in there that wasn't like strictly Chromebook related, but all of that is, is pretty, um, pretty germane to Chromebooks.
Yeah, don't quote me on this, but I think she has like six or more Chromebook cards that she's ordering for next year. She wants to.
White gloves, this is, um, what that Chromebook company uses to say that they're going to install the software you need. You're also gonna get, uh, the warranty on it and, and things like that. It's it's their title for that, but it's, it all has to do with the Chromebooks, right?
Gotcha.
It's not a butler for the CS teachers.
Oh, I wish.
Any other questions?
I, I guess I just wanna reiterate, so, you know, these expenses, the four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, that's not coming out of our operating revenue. That's really coming out of what I'm calling, you know, maybe our savings, that, that four million that I was showing it on another slide. So these expenses and a lot of these expenses do happen every year.
And maybe, you know, a comment, and we can talk about, more about this next month when we, we talk about our strategic plan, but you know, our, as you just presented, Bella, our revenue is pretty much set by the state and there's only so little we can do to improve that and to enhance that. What we can do is use philanthropy and fundraising as a way to complement that. So we shouldn't be using or counting on a money that we raise for things that are operational nature that repeat every year because there, there's no guarantee, um, at least not at the level of fundraising that we're doing right now, that, that we're gonna continue to have the money. But there are ways to offload our operating expenses by, uh, improving our, our fundraising and our development. So that is the kind of thing that, that we would hope to do more and more of. And I know there's some ideas out there. So again, we can talk more about that next month, but point being, you know, yes, there might be things that could be recurring over time, but we're capitalizing the assets like the laptops and the IT equipment, um, that comes out of that, that capital budget.
Where did we land on the subject of the covenants? And the threshold?
This would be in line with the covenant.
Is that all you meant, Darren, or?
Yeah, I just, um, I couldn't remember how the math worked and whether, what, what, what the number was out of the total that we needed to.
We'll land at one point one five.
All right. Are we ready for a vote? All right. I think we are. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, um, budget presented by Leanna. And as recommended by the finance committee.
Motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Was Bella? I'll second that. Raul, if someone's mute. You have muted, Sarah, if you wanna call the roll. You're still on mute, Sarah.
Okay, Bella? Yes. Darren?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Gil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Samini?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you very much. We have a budget for next year. I know it's a lot of work, so I, I wanna thank specifically Leanna and Lisa for, for all the work, the work that administration has done. I know that there's a lot more than just the two of you behind, uh, the work that needs to happen for everybody asking what they want in their budget and rolling that up and then the discussions in finance. So it, it seems just like a list of numbers on a, on a piece of paper, but we understand it's a lot of work. So I appreciate all the effort that everybody has put into that.
I wanna thank Bella for all the help she's given me. Thank you so much.
Great. I think she's ready to be our next treasurer. We'll take care of that next month. All right. So that's it for votes. So for, for our new trustees, um, one thing that, and I gotta say, compared to when I joined the board, we, we made a couple of changes to have, uh, make sure that the meeting moved as, as efficiently as possible. And one of those is to make sure we put all the votes at the beginning. So the beginning of the meeting feels like we're just taking votes, but I promise you that was it for today. Uh, we, we move on from votes now into our updates from the different representatives and, and different parts of the school. So I know Marcy has been on the line for a while and I thank you for your patience while we're getting through the votes. But, um, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Marcy, if you wanna give us an update on the capital campaign.
And while Marcy's setting up, I'll just say that we're running about ten minutes ahead of schedule and hopefully we'll keep it that way, since you were talking about efficiency.
Yes, thank you, Sam.
No, no pressure. Thank you. Um, so just a couple of quick updates that are, um, things we've been working on since the last time I spoke to you all. So I, we're, as you know, putting an emphasis on the brick program, um, because we need to wrap it up this summer. So we are at a hundred and nine bricks, which is great. We still want to sell a lot more. We did do a mailer to all families, um, asking people to consider buying a brick. We're also doing that, uh, if you've given three hundred and fifty dollars or more to, um, Amza over the past couple of years throughout sort of the capital campaign project, you get a free brick. We sent a reminder out to everybody about that a couple of weeks ago, but we'll continue to do reminders just so people have the opportunity to book those. Mara is actually gonna talk to you all about, um, doing a memorial brick for Ben Hamel. I think that would be a nice, um, touch for, for us to stick that in there. Um, and then so that's it for bricks. Uh, we've done a couple, few other outreach touchpoints over the last couple of weeks. We did a matching gift reminder to all families. So anybody that's given sort of to set their sites to make sure they check their company to see if there's a match, as you, I think everybody knows, we did, um, have a very generous donation earlier this year that totaled seven thousand dollars, but because the person worked at Fidelity, um, it was double matched. So we ended up with twenty-one thousand dollars from that gift, which is really significant for us. So that's sort of always on top of mind to remind people that matching gifts really do help boost our bottom line. We also, um, emailed, I think it was just today, or maybe it was yesterday, and emailed out to all sixth to eighth grade parents. So at this stage, we've solicited, if you will, all of the families, but we will, um, do a couple more reminders before the end of the fiscal year. We are tabling at Arts and Science Night. Um, the goal is for us to sort of put a really easy packet together, like a table in a box type of thing, that any, so anybody can use it to set up some information, um, on the ready for any events that we have international fair, all the other stuff. So the first one that we have, I mean, we've done tabling in the past, this will be a little more of an organized effort. So it, it will all be contained in a box and the materials will always be updated and anybody can grab it for us. So, um, Arts and Science Night, I think that Um, Arts and Science Night, I think that Mark is going to tap into the Events Committee, hopefully to staff. That table for us, those wonderful volunteers who do so much work for us. Um, couple of save the dates, so they're running with the Eagles five K is Saturday, June fifteenth. That is over at the Solomon Pond Mall. There are details about that event on the website. The um, Fifth Annual AMSA Golf Tournament is Tuesday, August sixth, at Marlboro Country Club. Um, registration is open for that. We're also. Starting to be a little more aggressive in our asks for sponsorships for that. Um, and to roll it into speaking about sponsorships, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I'm actually not frozen if I did or not. We are rolling out a business partners program. So those are year long sponsorship opportunities for local businesses, um. And we've put some wonderful materials together. I actually sent the link to Sarah earlier, so she'll, I'm sure she'll get it all out to all of you, um, the website material. So. We're putting packets together. We have some stewards that are ready to go out and tap into those businesses. Um, part of, I mean, part of the reason we're doing this is one sort of to continue to build this foundation of support that we need. But also because I think that there we have some real momentum going into our twentieth anniversary, um, to, you know, continue this. Um, storytelling about the culture of philanthropy that we need as a school to, you know, maintain. To be able to be nimble year to year, um. And then we just, we had another STEM board strategic planning session last. Was it last week or the week before last week? I don't know. I I think it was last week. Um, and so that group is in good shape heading. Into the summer, um, with a couple of core members. We had a couple of people step off. Um, and we are, will continue to, you know, refine some of the. Um, mission and materials for that group to to move forward as our philanthropic arm. And I think. That is all I have.
Excellent. Sounds like a lot going on.
We're trying. We're trying. I, you know, we've been doing a few more tours, um, and, you know, just trying to get more people in and talk about things more. And just, we're starting actually an internal fundraising newsletter that we'll send out to all of the staff and faculty, just so everybody here sort of understands. The the what's going on and, you know, the wins that we're having and sort of our ideas and our philosophy. I'm not actually sure that. I can't say with full confidence that everybody. Uh, you know, certainly on the staff understands that we've shifted away from the messaging around the capital campaign and we're more focused on the concept of the annual fund. So just do some education around that. My goal will be to put a newsletter. Um, like that together monthly, just, you know, to say, oh, did you know, did you know that? We just received this amount of money from this group and we're working on this and here's, you know, some save the date items, you know, not dissimilar frankly to these updates that. That I share with you all.
Thank you. And more, I think that was an excellent idea to have a memorial break for. For Ben, you know, we we miss him dearly, so. That will be a fitting, um. You know, memorial. Thank you, Marcy. Any comments or questions for Marcy? Roger?
Uh, Marcy, could the uh, Board of Trustees also receive a copy of the uh, report that you're sharing with staff?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I second Raul's opinion on on the brick.
So talk about, what what do you need from us for that? But we can talk about.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
You're welcome.
Alright, we'll. Turn it now over to Greg for a faculty rep update. We missed it last month.
Uh, thank you. Um. So. The the main thing this month is that I would like to talk about is. Um, a pretty pervasive feeling among the staff about. A lack of things to go on. I know I might be ringing the same bell that I rang. Last time, but um, we're coming into May, which means A P tests, which means it's, at least I find it's generally one of the first times that teachers can take a breath. After, um, you know, a couple of months in March and April. Um, it's it's also the time when people start looking for jobs. Um, if they are thinking of moving schools, not wondering what they're. Or are wondering what they're going to be doing next year. Um, and the the main thing I want to communicate. In this report is that I have a lot of people asking me, hey. What's the deal with? The union contract or what's the deal with? The schedule or what's the deal with, you know, a- any number of things that tend to get decided. Towards the end of the year. Um, I've already spoken uh, with Dr. Mowgli and with Mike about this. Um, just a couple of days ago, um, but that's, that's really the main thing that I'm hearing. Uh. I know that the administration and the board has a lot to negotiate. I mean, I know that's why you guys are going into executive session later. Um, the staff knows that there is a grievance with the union that you guys are talking about, although we have been told to essentially shut up and stop gossiping about it. By our our union lead, uh, which is fair enough, but. A a lot of people have a lot of questions that I know can't be answered, but I think the the main message here is that the sooner that. The negotiations get resolved, the sooner that we have a schedule, the. More information that people have to operate on, I think the smaller the variance of outcomes will be. It's a lot easier to jump ship if you don't know where the ship is headed. And I I know of at least. Like I said, several people that have offers from other places and that have told me I would like to stay. But I have nothing to compare against, so I really don't know. What to do. And I think that that sort of thing can pile up fast. I think we've seen it in. Previous years where, as of May first, I mean, I'm I've only been working at AMSA for four years, but I've seen it happen. As of May first, it's like, yeah, no one seems to be leaving. And then May thirtieth. A lot of people seem to be leaving. Um, so the the sooner that information can be given, I would say, the better. And that's pretty much all. I have on that.
Understood. And and I think you said it great, but you know, we're encouraged teachers that are curious about the progress to to reach out to your union rep. Um, that is the source of information. You know, fortunately, us communicating what's going on with you would be a violation of the the, you know, what we committed as part of the process. Um, I do want to say, you know, both sides are very encouraged and and motivated to wrap this up as soon as possible. And you're highlighting the reasons why that's true. So. Definitely I agree with you that that we want to get this resolved as 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 quickly as possible. So. Appreciate that and, you know, thank you for sharing the feedback.
I I guess I also want to add, I mean, I think the administration and the board were working really hard. And we've been working a lot on on this. Uh, and, you know, I've been spending a lot of my time as well, working with Leanna and Lisa, Dr. Mowgli. So. Um, we are, you know, we. It's not like we're not doing anything. We're we're working really hard on it and we really want to come to an agreement.
It's encouraging to hear. Yeah, and I don't. Sorry, I I I don't mean to insinuate that I people think you guys aren't working hard. I I think that's. That's not true at all.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, it's it's on everybody's mind, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I think I just want to share and Mike, feel free to jump in because I did share it with Greg when when we met. I think there's a lot of anxiety around the schedule because we're going, we're using a whole different process, right? So in the past. We had a scheduling team that consisted mostly of the staff and primarily because they were the computer science es- experts that. Um, ran it through their program, Lighthouse first, and then. Redica when we had that, um. We are working. Really hard with Power School. Uh, Mike and Amanda have put in countless hours. Uh, they have done an unofficial first run. And scheduling was an area of expertise for me for a good eleven, eleven years, eleven to fifteen years in Rhythm and. On their first run, they have a seventy percent fill, which is typically unheard of with scheduling. So. Uh, they're gonna get there. Teachers will get their schedules just like they've always gotten their schedules near the end of the year. Um. They never get them now, but it but it does cause a lot of anxiety to use a different process for them not to be as directly involved. And part of that is. Hands in the pot, the way Power School operates and operates very much like Infinite Campus that I used to use and. Really, one person can be in the scheduler at a time. It's kind of this wonky. Excel type of situation. So Mike and Amanda, um, Kate Driver was involved, but now Mike and Amanda have taken over. Over the the rest of it, um. The other thing is, after speaking with Greg, and it's great that we get our meetings before these board meetings. I am going to do a voluntary all staff meeting on May sixteenth. I wish I could be there on the seventh, but I have. A personal thing going on that day and I can't be there for all staff, but I'm going to do a voluntary meeting on. May sixteenth. We need to talk a little bit about the budget and finances and some other things that are kind of coming down the road. For staff, I'll put out an agenda, um, and they can come and they can ask questions and we'll answer as many questions. As we can to hope to kind of quell that anxiety while hopefully we. Hopefully by by then, we might even have some good negotiation information because our next meeting is on the thirteenth. So. We can be hopeful, um. And and go from there. Mike, did you want to add anything about the scheduling process or the schedule?
Hey, sorry, I'm on my cell phone, um, so I I my camera doesn't work on my phone. Uh, no, I don't really have much to add. Uh, we, like, like you said, we. Are dealing with a brand new system. Power School is new to all of us. We just had a three hour session uh, yesterday and we did, we have every. Our schedule shows all of our teachers. Uh, we had to do a lot of that uh. Behind the scenes uh, work in in the guts of Power School, if you will, to set up. As much information as possible, um, to. You know, when we hit the load button to make sure, you know, prioritizing rooms, which teacher has a room priority, where. These particular subjects or these particular classes have to take place in a particular classroom or at least in a. Set of two or three classrooms. That that took. A long, long, long time. It wasn't all done in this three hour session yesterday, but. It was kind of the culmination of all the work throughout the year so far and things are looking good. There's definitely some tweaks to be made, but. Um, as you mentioned, Lisa, we we always get the schedule out to the teachers by the end of the year, what their, what the following year will look like. We will have that ready. I'm confident in saying that.
And I think the other thing to add is with how. Great Mike and Amanda are working on this. Next year will be even simpler. So all of those things like you need to take. Um, algebra for you, take A P Calc or all those kind of rules that have to be set up. They only have to be set up once. They weren't set up last year because Power School kind of came on late and fortunately we had Brian Baca. And his system, so he built it in his system and we just adopted it in Power School. So none of the pre-work was done last year. And that's why this year we really started from scratch. Mike and Amanda started this process, I want to say October, November. So. We'll be in good shape come the end of the year. We we promise that.
Yeah, I will definitely, I mean, we, like I said, we had talked about this a couple of days ago, but I I'm definitely gonna relay that to the staff where I can, and I think a lot of them will find that encouraging.
Yeah, and just for the record, I do want to mention Lindsey Corallo, one of our um, high school school counselors. Is involved in the scheduling team as well. I do want to give her credit. Uh, she has some experience working with Power School from her prior district uh, several years ago. So. She's been a tremendous help as well, but we are getting there. Tons of prep work has all been completed and the results are starting to show. Uh, we'll be in touch with the staff, you know, once we have some more concrete updates.
Did anyone else have any, any questions for me? Alright, Raul, I'll hand it back over to you.
Thank you for that update. Thanks for sharing the feedback. We always appreciate it. And with that, um, where is Dwayne?
There.
I'm here. I'm here.
So I was looking at my uh. Hollywood Squares here looking for you.
Alright, I'm here. Just the um, this is a brief update for this month. So not, again, not too much on the the parent side of things. So. Folks know that I have an email. Um. I've I've been trying to solicit some feedback when I'm at my kids' sports sporting events or so, just to talk to parents while they're there. Um, and pretty much everyone's, you know, everything is going well. So I guess no news is good news, which is, which is, which is good. Um, I did connect with the um, with the P T O um, towards the beginning of this week and they gave me a couple of updates. Um, they do have a new treasurer. Um, they didn't give me the the exact name of the person, but they do have a new treasurer. Um, they are starting to work with the administration and parents um, to keep, to continue to engage with the community. Um, couple of things they. You know, Pi Day has 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 gone on. They also um, did some donations of umbrellas for drop off and pickup. Um, also other things happening this week. After prom, so after prom is going to be a big thing um, this weekend. Um, they they did have some new parents volunteer and so they they feel comfortable about carrying this event forward um, into into future years as well. Um, sponsor senior is wrapping up, um, as graduation is coming up, um, and, um. They're doing some collages, some senior collages, so they're trying to create a tradition for senior collages and having them um, hang on the fence between the school and four kicks. Um, and then, you know, they're just trying to get more engagement from the community so that we can get more parents to participate um, within the P T O and also looking to, um. You know, fill the P T O board as well, so. That's my update.
Thank you, Dwayne. I know we have very engaged parents. I know a few. So thank you for sharing that. Any questions for for Dwayne? Alright. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa. To, um, I should say, continue your executive director report that started with that.
Yeah, the the rest will be quick, um. But one thing I did want to say before I share my screen and Leanna gives a little walkthrough of our building, our main, we're calling it the main building at this point in time. Because it'll be our main building on campus. Uh, we may have to run a contest to do something more AMSA like and and uh, get the kids involved, but uh. It is Teacher Appreciation Week next week. And I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Uh, send your little notes in to the staff members. I'm sure they would appreciate it. Um, they work really hard at AMSA. Our results are amazing. Uh, we have a couple of surprises. For them, uh, nothing crazy, but a couple of surprises. So it is Teacher Appreciation Week next week. So let's see, uh, slideshow, oh, no. View. So Leanna, you take it away.
I just realized I was on mute, sorry. Okay, so some very exciting developments have happened with the building um, over the past month. Um. They finally removed the winter wrap, so. Um, to many people's surprise, um, they thought that. Just recently they've done all this work, but all of this work has actually been going on underneath the wrap. Um, so it's looking really good. In fact, um, when I drove by. Today, they started insulating the outside. So the next picture I show you. Next time will probably be all enclosed, which is exciting. Um, the photo on the left, uh, so this is all on the first floor. The photo on the left, you can see. They've installed some ductwork on the ceiling and some plumbing. Um, and the photo on the right is the stairwell. Um, those steps just need a little cement in there. Um, that should be done this week, actually. So the next time we go in there, we should be able to use the internal stairs, which will be. Quite fun. Um, next slide, please. Um, and now they're starting to do the interior framing and you can start seeing these classrooms, these beautiful big classrooms going up. These pictures don't do it justice. Um, but you can see on the left that I'm actually in a classroom taking that photo and then. Um, off to the right, you can see the the framed in classrooms. There's two there, um, going side by side. Next slide, please. Um, then up on the second floor, that most of the interior framing has been completed. So you can really get a glimpse of the classrooms and and what it's gonna look like. The little room on the left is actually a prep room between two science classrooms. Very big. Good sized room where. You know, both classrooms will be able to do their own prep on each side of the room. Um, very exciting. Uh, the picture on the right is the hallway going down the middle and you can kind of see, well. This one you can't see so much, but you can see the interior doors and things like that. Going down the hall. but you can see the interior doors and things like that going down the hall. And, um, this picture on the left is just one giant, I think it's the chemistry lab. Um, don't quote me on that, but it's just big and it's so beautiful. And you could, if you look closely enough, you can see those big giant windows off to the side. That's going to let so much sunlight in for, you know, the classrooms to enjoy. Um, and then it's just more, um, the picture on the right is actually, um, showing you the bathrooms that are going to be on the second floor, that they've got all the plumbing in. Let me go to the next slide, please. Is that it? Oh, that's it.
That, that must be it, because it wasn't going anywhere.
All right.
Excellent. Well, it's good to see the, the building taking shape. Anything else, Lisa?
No, that's all we have tonight, just the building and the SOA plan for tonight.
Excellent. Any questions from anybody? Can't wait to see the building completed. All right, then moving on to chair business. Um, I guess the only thing I had there, uh, was board education topics. And, you know, we, we tried our first one today with finance one-on-one. For next month, we have slated the, um, review of the process for the charter renewal. I keep looking at Sarah to make sure that she's okay with that, but you know, she's the expert on that. Well, if anything changes, we'll let you know, but that's the plan for next, uh, next board meeting. Uh, one thing that I forgot to do when we welcomed our two new trustees, part of the onboarding process, that, that we define in governance includes assigning a mentor for each one of the new, uh, trustees. We didn't talk about this in advance, so I'm not going to put anybody on the spot. But if anybody wants to volunteer to pair up with, uh, with Jim and Christine, uh, please let me know. We can figure that out offline between now and the next meeting. But, uh, just know that that's part of how we want to make sure that you know what it means to join the board. And there's a bunch of paperwork and stuff that we put together in governance to make sure that, that you know what this is all about. I think some of that, Samony may have already shared. But, um, having somebody to reach out to, of course you can reach out to anybody, but assigning somebody specifically helps with making sure that if you, there's a question you don't want to ask publicly, or you just want to check in between meetings, you feel free to reach out to anybody, uh, to your mentor as we talk about.
It's really wonderful. That's a really great process.
Yes, so, um, we'll confirm who that is, because I, I don't want to put anybody on the spot over here. But, um, hopefully, you know, some of the board members that are continuing past the June thirtieth. And then the other thing that I, I'll put as part of the chair business, and, and we can figure this out offline between now and June. The next meeting, uh, will be our annual meeting. So that means that we are choosing the, the next officers. So there, there'll be a, a vote to pick the next officers. If anybody is interested in, in nominating themselves, or, you know, they're interested in taking over, you know, the board chair role, the vice chair, the treasurer, uh, please, you know, let me know between now and then. If not, you know, we'll have a slate, you know, and we'll, we'll talk about the, the candidates for that and we'll, we'll have a discussion in the next board meeting. But that's one of the things that we do in the June meeting and our annual meeting. Uh, and the other logistical thing is that we will be starting at six thirty. I think Roger, you requested that make it a, since we're going to meet in person, just to confirm that, it's going to be an in-person meeting. Um, six thirty is a good time to allow for, for commute. I know the Boston traffic is not great. Some of you are coming from closer to Boston, so we'll start at that time. But I will offer, we used to always get together about an hour before in the, uh, conference room there in, in the, uh, counseling department for food. So I'm, I'm going to send out an email to see who's interested and who's available to join earlier. But this will be my last board meeting as a chair and as a trustee. And I will be more than happy to give everybody that can, that's, that's available to come by at five thirty, um, some dinner. So, uh, you know, for once, we're not starting a board meeting, uh, all hungry. And, and that way, you know, I will be able to go longer, because, you know, usually I try to wrap things up quickly because I'm starving. But, um, anyway, I'll, I'll offer that, if, you know, if you think that's a good idea, then, you know, we'll, we can follow up over email to see who can make it at, at five thirty and then hopefully have some chance to, um, to just, you know, chat and hang out before the actual formal board meeting. So I, I think that, that would be good. So like, we'll, we'll coordinate that over email between now and June. I don't remember the date off the top of my head, but I think it's towards the end of them. Say that again?
I think it's the sixth.
The sixth, June sixth, yeah, so about a month from now. Um, all right, so that's all I got for, um, chair business. Uh, moving on to committee reports. So more, I know we're, we're making a lot of, uh, I guess transformational development, so.
We are, there's a lot of movement and Marcy actually did a great job covering a lot of the stuff, because a lot of, there's still been a lot of overlap. Um, but just a couple of things that I do want to call attention to. So, um, for Ben's brick, I will sort of get details to everybody, but we'll come up with, um, a sentiment that we want to put on it and then I'll just kind of collect. And we'll get that squared away, but, um, Marcy approached me about, um, wanting to do something. And it's an awesome idea, so I'm super excited about it and I'm, we're just going to do it. I don't think we need to vote on it or anything like that, we're just going to do it. Um, the next development committee meeting is May twenty second. Um, it's going to be eight thirty in the morning and, um, we don't have anything new to report necessarily. We are doing, as Marcy mentioned, a lot more sort of reorganization. She's got the new business partnership program, which is exciting. And I think that is going to move a lot of the things we've talked about for some time forward in terms of developing these through partnerships. So we're not going back to a lot of our big partners time and time again, repeatedly, that we're going to actually develop these partnerships, um, which I think is a much stronger approach to it. Um, one thing I do want to build on that Marcy said was the golf tournament. So one ask that we typically make of the board members, um, as for auction items, obviously, we would love to have you all golf. And so registration is open, so claim your foursome, because they do fill up, which is fantastic. Um, but we're always looking for fun, unique, exciting auction items. So that could be anything from, Roger has always done a game night, um, which is fun and always, uh, has some, some competition for it, to sporting events tickets, to if you have a vacation home that you want to share or boat you want to take people out on, right? Experiences are always, um, really good. So feel free to reach out to me if you have questions or thoughts and you want to see if something makes sense. Um, but we will happily take any auction items you guys have. And that's it, there's going to be more after the May meeting for development. Um, there'll be some more exciting stuff to talk about, so.
Well, definitely hit us up for that brick.
Will do, I'll come knocking, don't worry.
Great. Any questions for Mara? I gotta say, I'm, I'm happy, I, I won the bid, uh, maybe it was a couple of years ago on, on Roger's game night. We, we had a great time. We, we brought some of our games and some of his games, so it was a little bit of a two-way sharing on, of, of, of board games. All right, Roger, speaking of which, finance.
Yeah, uh, finance was most, was ninety percent focused on the budget, which you've seen and approved. We also did get a, a yearly presentation from our, um, uh, finance advisor, where we were investing our fund, our, our funds beyond, our funds into, uh, treasuries. And they presented how that works. And we received that and we plan to continue going forward on that. Uh, that's the finance report.
Thank you. And like I said earlier, I know there's a lot of work that goes be, behind getting to the point that we got today, so thank you for that. Samini, governance.
Yeah, um, so our focus, a lot of our focus is on board recruitment. And, uh, we are very happy that today we had a successful sort of, uh, vote on two, uh, new members. And that's great, given that there's going to be some turnover, um, on the board, given, uh, with some terms coming to an end. So really appreciate that. But while we were doing that board recruitment, we also kind of introspected a little bit more about the process itself and asked ourselves what took so long when it did and what could we have done faster? And what kind of, um, essentially, um, continuous improvement we can do on the, uh, on the process? So there, I mean, I think one of the things we came up with was, there was always this confusion of is there a separate task force for recruitment? Um, but we all agreed that governance is the task force for recruitment. And typically I've seen board members, when you're recruiting, you refer people to governance and say, hey, we'd like you to take a look at this person and start to chat with them and stuff. And that worked out really well. So I just want to formalize that in terms of like, that's been a good streamlining, I think, um, overall. Uh, not sure we need a vote on it, Raoul. Uh, I'm guessing it's just again, a process change. Uh, it's worked well, but of course, if you have questions or flags, you know, happy to discuss that offline. Um, and then similarly, Sarah and I are looking at just streamlining and reviewing the overall board, uh, like the onboarding stuff and the process itself. Um, again, that's just a part for the course, you know, we revisit that every time, uh, that a new member joins, just to make sure that we're not missing anything, or we can make things better and make things a little more efficient as we go. Uh, the other topics were around board education, which you've already seen come through. That's a standing topic for us. We talk about what's coming next and do we have the right topics for the board? Um, and then we talked about who makes up for a voting member and when, uh, Lisa, uh, votes or when she doesn't. And there was some agreement on that. Um, that was one of the conversations we had about voting, but I think we ended up in a good place with regard to board members and, um, Sarah in terms of governance, being a voting member. And similarly, having, uh, a criteria for understanding who votes on the committees. And of course, we already have that for the board. And then.
And Sam, if I may explain a little bit about that, because I think there, there was, when we asked in the, I think in the last couple of meetings I've been asking, you know, is, are there any policies for review? And, and one of the things that, that came up was, was that question about ex officio members of committees? So committee members are not necessarily, I mean, yes, all board members are members of certain committees, but there may be committee members that are not board members. So actually, we have two examples here, where new trustees started as committee members first. But there's also ex officio members of the school staff and the school administration that are part of the, of, of those, some committees. So by the bylaws, our business manager is a member of the finance committee. Our director of compliance is a member of governance. And our principal is a member of the education committee. So they do get to vote. And the question was, well, doesn't the executive director also get a vote? And the conclusion was, as it is right now, she doesn't. And, you know, she was okay with, with that continued to be the case. You know, she is not a voting member. Uh, officially, she represent, you know, what she does represents the, the board's vote. So there wasn't a need to change that.
Yep. Thank you, uh, Raoul, for contextually explaining that particular discussion. And that, that I think at least sort of income, it, it encapsulates the various discussions that governance had. There was a bunch of action items that are coming out that we still need to discuss at the next four, uh, next committee meeting, which has to do with the student handbook review and a couple of other things around succession planning, um, that I think we will discuss in the upcoming governance committee meetings. And you'll see outcomes from that come back to the board as needed. So that, that is governance.
Any questions for Samini? Then we'll move on to education. And I, I saw Roger, our survey went out this week, so.
Yeah, so, uh, your education committee did not meet this week, this, uh, since last board meeting. We will be meeting, uh, to look at the, the, uh, parent survey results as well as launching the staff survey. Uh, so I'd encourage everybody who is a parent to check your email or your spam box and look for the AMSA survey and please fill it out. And we will be, uh, seeing the, starting to see the results in the, uh, May education committee meeting and hopefully have initial report in the June board meeting.
I'd just like to add, um, that the, the family survey is out and I just checked it because I was curious. Um, we have seventy responses so far, which is a five point two percent response rate in three days. So we're hoping to bump that up. We'll see how it goes. I, I am, I intend to spam all of your e，在boxes as parents, uh, with quite a few more emails before I'm ready to call it quits, so.
Awesome.
And Greg, can you remind me when the, uh, survey closes? Did we set a survey close date for the parents?
I don't think we have a particular close date. I think we had a duration of two weeks. I, if I remember correctly, that was normal. Um, I don't know if we want to stick to that. I mean, I think that's something that the committee can discuss, like over email.
Yep. So all the parents out there, please fill out the survey. It's very valuable for us to help guide the school. And back to you, Raoul.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Roger? All right, then we move into our wrap up. Um, I don't think, did we have any action items today, Sarah?
Not really. There was one, um, Marcy was going to get information to the board, the same information to the board. That was the only thing that would even resemble the, an action item, I think. You know, the, the information that she was putting out to, um, parents, I think she's.
The staff.
The staff, thank you.
And I did mention, uh, the moving, uh, you know, talking about charter renewal process next, next board meeting. Awesome. So that is pretty much it, unless anybody asks anything else, uh, we will be ready to go into executive session.
Uh, one more, um, small agenda item for the June meeting. And in addition to elections, we'll need to have the, uh, have the parent, uh, not the, the parent rep we're good on, but we'll have a teacher rep elections hopefully before the, uh, uh, June meeting as well, because the teacher.
So the board doesn't select the teacher rep, the teachers, so, well.
The, the teacher selected in the board action item would be to approve the, uh, nomination that the teachers make.
It usually happens in early May, right?
Yep. So that's homework for the teachers for a change. All right, um, anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiation strategies with representative personnel.
And who would you be inviting to?
Uh, yes, we're inviting, uh, just for the sake of, um, clarity and to be explicit, I'm going to invite our new trustees. So Christine Tradant and Jim Carter, uh, Dr. Mobley, Leanna McLaren and Mike Naraki. Is Amanda joining us today? Nope, so I think, did I miss anybody else?
Did you say Amanda was, was?
She's not, yeah.
She's not, okay.
So I think. Darren moved.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't get that, hold on.
No worries.
We got the vote going, so, um.
Moved by Darren.
Darren first, yes.
Second by Maura.
There and. Okay. And I will call this, uh, Bella?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Raoul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Samini?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.